All right. Going into pledge of religion. Pledge of religion, silver flag, be blessed, prayer, and to the holy priest and one nation under God. In this bold, living degree, and have such a strong.
This is on roll call. A roll call for the hearing. One minute, Councilor Khan. And to you, Councilor Lane.
Here.
Councilor McCauley.
Yeah.
Councilor Preston.
Yeah.
Councilor Shan.
Here.
Councilor Wright.
Yeah.
Councilor Z.
Here.
Councilor Donahue.
Yeah.
Councilor Grantis.
Here.
Councilor Hammond.
Here.
And Councilor Cameron. Yeah. The notice for the hearing reads as follows. City Council Hybrid Public Hearing on FY 2025 Proposed City Projects, Including All City Departments, Water and Sewer, Harbor Master, and Capital Improvement Plan. To be held June 25, 2024, 7:00 PM at Council Chamber, City Hall. Please use the following Zoom link. The proposed operating budget capital improvement plan are available for extension to clerk's office during regular business hours. Please call at any point. Additionally, the proposed budget capital improvement plan may be viewed online at cityreport.com/budgets. That is the notice.
Thank you. Would any person wishing to speak either in favor or in opposition to budget? We will do public comment, so if anyone has signed up. I think we'll also do online if I see a hand in the next minute or so. James Snow.
It's done, it's known. Okay, James Snow, 9th Avenue Street. First and foremost, I wanted to thank all the staff and department heads and units who came to the budget hearings and shared with the residents that came and the council is all about your different determines what you were doing, what you needed to talk with. I learned a lot and I appreciate that you took time away from your families in the evening to come and share that information. And I just wanted to make sure I said thank you because we are so fortunate in the report that we have great employees who are working diligently behind the scenes and we just have seamless days and they're the ones that have to take care of the pipe leaks and you know, traffic accidents and all the good stuff. So I just want to make sure that you know that people, residents, do appreciate all that you do. And councilors, you had a long night last night. Hopefully, we're not going to be in point as low and everyone having 10:30 votes here now. But again, you've worked very hard on the budget and I appreciate it and I know at times not everybody agrees with everybody. And you have the hard job of putting away all the personal things that you would like and trying to decide what you think is the best course for the city. And I know it's a hard job and I hope you can kind of put your personal hat at the door and really look at the figures and things because I am incredibly concerned that the budget as is each year with the raises for employees, for salaries and things. It's just not sustainable and we've somehow got to come up with a way to make it so that it's affordable for a lot of people in the city and not just some. So thank you and have a good day.
Thank you. Uncle Lane, who is back there. Step right up to the line and name, address.
Thank you, everybody. I'm here and thank you very much for.
It's Uncle Lane, back there, 39th.
39th Street. Yeah. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to man and express some concerns I have regarding rising tax rates, particularly as they are applied to our seniors. I happen to have a lot of interaction with seniors in the city. I am Chair of the Council on Aging. And I'm very happy to say that I've been a volunteer at the senior center since its opening with that blend. So every day I get feedback from our seniors. Most of whom would never come to a meeting because they don't go out at night. Don't use the computer as they wouldn't zoom in. And many of them are not well, they're ill health. So I hope tonight to have their voice and speak for them and relay some of the comments that I received from the many that I've talked to. Seniors cannot continue to absorb high taxing pieces. Those individuals who have lived in Newburyport their entire life and own a home are very concerned that they will not be able to live their life out in the city they love. They are on a fixed income and have very hard, have a very hard time in meeting the possible living as it is, let alone excessive taxing increases. I can speak for myself in terms of my retirement in 2014. I read that and analyzed the amount of taxes that have increased since the time of 2014, my retirement. My taxes have increased in 10 years 64%. My income from social security increased a whopping average of 2.2%. As you can see, 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 some of the seniors in general are really hurting to make this meet. We really need to pay attention to the budget items and really try to make it affordable for seniors to continue their life living in the city they love.
Thank you, Elaine, that's.
Okay.
Thank you. Stephanie Niget. And then again, two minutes.
Can I speed talk?
Get it all in.
No, I can't, I cannot do it, I cannot do it. Stephanie Niget, 9th Street. And so this is the one meeting and we're here, we're going to see so many city staff in our girl. Thank you for all you do. Thank you to City Council, particularly to Budget Chair, Budget and Finance Chair Shuri Said and members of that committee and to all of you for the amount of work that goes in to reviewing this budget. It is a tremendous amount of work, a lot of readings. And as much as citizens can be informed that it's going on, they can't, they can't control it. You're represented. And one of the difficult things is that you're not getting feedback, I understand, during this process of reviewing this budget. I think what happens is the feedback comes in December when the new tax bill arrives. And then it's too late. So I hope when you look at the budget and everything you're looking at tonight, you will keep in mind last December and the reaction that people have and the year before that, the reaction people have to these incredible increases in their property tax bill. And it is hurting people, it's hurting seniors, it's hurting families. Not everyone in Newburyport can absorb this rate of increase in rates, taxes. And it's a, it's a, it's a very sad thing for the city for it to become unsustainable for people who have lived here all their lives for decades and have made the city actually go to dismount. So please keep that in mind as you go around the budget, thank you.
Thank you. Brianna Higgins.
Hi, Brianna Higgins, School Committee Member, 17th Story Drive. I just wanted to sit in front of you and say that I support the school budget that has been presented to all the new that was voted on by the school committee. I defended it carefully, I thought through it, it's a very long process, it starts over there winter. So the superintendent presents an aspirational budget, presents a level service budget, presents another, a final budget, and then we heard from the mayor that some cuts were needed and so we did address those cuts before it went to in its final version. And so again, the budget that was presented, although there is an increase, like we all should remember that 70% of our budget is paid up of salaries that are actually obligated to increase by 2 to 3% each year. Inflation obviously goes up, our transportation costs goes up. And so all of these things happen, you know, the budget increases by between 2 and 4%, even without any additional service and speech for our students. No FTEs were added to the school budget this year, in fact, they actually declined. So if anybody has particular questions about the budget throughout this process tonight or in the future, I'm happy to answer any questions. I know intelligent people can certainly disagree about how the budget is spent, but I just wanted to let you all know that I carefully reviewed the budget and I feel confident that the way it was.
Great, thank you. Julia Walker.
Good evening, Julia Walker, 13 Eagle Street, School Committee Member. Also here to support the school budget being presented tonight. I can reiterate that this has been a lengthy process. We vetted as a school committee. We individually have our concerns, we face those throughout the process and we started that process in November or before. So I would say that coming to you, it has been through a lengthy debate and discussion with school committee members, with the administration. But I would say that we all agree on one thing, which is that we want to serve our students the best we can, understanding what we can do within the feasibility of our community. So we are mandated to serve every student that lives in this community, whether they come in at the beginning of the school year or they come in the middle of the school year or at the very end. And we have to build our budgets so we can plan not only to provide them with excellent education, but pursue those contingencies for unanticipated needs. So you'll see that the budget reflects not just the bare minimum. We are edging forward to rebuild programs that have been cut in the past. It has taken us almost two decades to build back programs that were cut a while ago in the foreign language, music, theater, arts, which are critical parts of a comprehensive education. But we're not doing that whole, we're not just adding the traditions back all at once. We're edging back towards that excellence. I think we have a 0.2 increase for music teacher this year to make a full-time music education program addition. But that doesn't reflect an overall increase in FTEs. We've made adjustments within the budget to maximize FTEs in other departments and other divisions. So overall, it's a conservative budget. We went through many iterations, but we're still trying to provide that excellence of education and serve every student that comes to that, no matter what their needs are, subject to the mandates of the NRC and out in the laws that we elected to serve. So I wholeheartedly endorse the budget and hopefully we will survive it. Thank you.
Thank you. And next would be Judy Avery.
Judy Avery, 54th Avenue Street. I'm very concerned about property tax increases with the passage of this letter. Because I did not attend budget workshop meetings, doesn't mean that I don't care. A budget is a plan for every dollar that you have. Not what you wish to have, not the hope to have. I think of means versus wants. Let's not live beyond our means. Things happen. School groups don't get the funding approved, meteor comes back with a new plan, et cetera. I chose this city more than 40 years ago. I chose some of you, but right now with this excessive spending, I do not believe that you are choosing to have me be able to live here.
Thank you, Judy. Here, I've stuck my little alarm here, we will have Jeanette Michelle.
I have so.
What's that?
I'm trying to discuss.
Me attribute it just like you. Jane, you get a form.
I may have to put the writing on the stick, I've never done it. So. Dear Shuri, I have another meeting tonight, so may not be able to attend the budget meeting at City Hall. I know you have been in contact with Elaine Padley and I want to say that I am in agreement with her concern for yet another significant increase in both property taxes and assessments. I am not going to list the reasons for my concerns. I will only say that this increase is a burden on others that impacts their daily lives, their health, and their ability to live their golden years in ways that deeply compromise their well-being, activity level, and ultimately their health. Please make my concerns known to your fellow council members if I am not there to expise them, I stop. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanette.
Oh, that was a good job.
Seeing no further public comment here on site, I do not see any entries online, so we're gonna, I entertain a motion for a closed public hearing.
Second.
They're made by Councilor Z, seconded by Councilor Harmon. We'll do a roll call on that.
Plaguing the public hearing, Councilor Khan.
Yes.
Councilor Lane, yes.
Councilor McCauley.
Yes.
Councilor Preston.
Yes.
Councilor Shan.
Yes.
Councilor Wright.
Yes.
Councilor Z.
Yes.
Councilor Donahue.
Yes.
Councilor Grantis.
Yes.
Councilor Hammond.
Yes.
And Councilor Cameron, the hearing is slow.
Yes, and now we will start the special, well, City Council, this portion, I think we can just do that. We're also starting with a roll call.
Roll call to start the special City Council meeting, June 25. Councilor Khan.
President.
Councilor Lane.
Yes.
Councilor McCauley.
Yes.
Councilor DeRusse.
Yeah.
Councilor Shan.
Correct.
Councilor Wright.
Yes.
Councilor Lee here.
Councilor Donahue.
Yeah.
Councilor Grantis.
Yes.
Councilor Hammond.
Yes.
Councilor Cameron.
Yes.
All right.
So thank you, everybody. So we're gonna start tonight with order 569, which is the FY 2025 budget order. So that, I'll take it to the committee in the hall and obviously we're here all together in session. I'm gonna do the reading from the booklet between Councilor Z, his Chair of Budget Finance, who has so ably led us so far through the, these many woods and twisty turns. Both will be certainly assisting and providing comment and running the numbers as will Ethan Manning, the City Finance Director. And we'll, we'll go down, I'll read each department if you can go to your budgets. I'll work with which is in your binder.
I'll just start with a motion to approve order 569.
Second. Okay, and we'll start discussion before we go through the lines. Right, the new question. Yes, please.
Thank you. So I do have some general comments I want to make on the budget, but really, an opening statement as the Chair of Budget, I really want to echo some of the sentiments you heard from public comment. Tremendous amount of thanks to really, first, to my colleagues, just so residents are aware, the 11 people in this room probably gave up on average, you know, three nights a week for the past six, eight weeks to review and vet both the capital plan and the budget. My colleagues on budget finance, especially having put in quite a bit of time. So thank you to all of them. Whenever we all come to terms of how we feel about this budget and the debate that may ensue. I also want to thank the administration in particular, so Mayor Reardon has been helpful in his administration. Chief Staff Andrew Levine, and of course, without a doubt, Ethan Manning, who's basically been working with us to facilitate all of the requests that councilors made throughout the process regarding this supplemental and behind those individuals, all the department heads you see here, who were basically the source of that information. So I don't want to reiterate the lengthy email I sent a couple of weeks ago about this process tonight, but just a brief reminder for residents who may be watching. This is the final hurrah on the budget for FY 25. We will be going through the lines. Counselors are empowered by our City Council Charter, or the City Charter, to make cuts to individual line items, anywhere from the full amount down to any amount they so choose. And that would then need to be seconded and then by assent of a majority, a bare majority six, a cut may pass and at the end of the night we'll take a vote on the full budget and that would also be a bare majority six to whatever two in order to be able to pass it. Sometimes residents do ask, so no, councilors are not enabled to coordinate, allowed to add to the council to budget lines. So cuts are cuts, they become unallocated funds, subject to future appropriation potentially or reduction in the tax collections when we set the tax rate in November. So again, there's a lot more to that story, but I think just to set this the agenda for tonight. And I'm still hoping, Mr. President, that if councilors want to make general comments on the budget before we start rolling, then to the O T R, thank you.
Certainly, thank you, Councilor Z. Any other councilor want to make a general comment before we begin to go through the lines?
So if no council wants to go, I will go. I, this is gonna be the bulk, I think, of what I say tonight on the budget, so I appreciate a little bit of leeway to make my comments after six to seven weeks of reviewing, as I had just mentioned. I really want to start off with a couple of key statistics, you know, this is the budget. Budget's about finance, finance is about numbers. So there are some really critical numbers that I've been thinking about and focusing on as I've been sort of thinking about the budget, what it means for the city and specifically what it means for taxpayers. So here are a couple of stats to consider. Two budgets ago, we had $939,000 in excess tax levy, which means that we were able to tax almost a million dollars more than we did. And that was just two budgets ago. Today, in this budget, this proposed budget, that number is zero. There will be no more excess tax levy. So in other words, we've swung the pendulum back from having excess of passing in our levy, which defined is defined as the maximum we're unable to tax down to zero. So that's one big swing and then in addition to the typical two and a half. And I want to say to residents, obviously, they know this intuitively from their tax bill, but a prop two and a half and the two and a half percent does not mean that tax bills go up by two and a half. I wish the math worked that way, but there are other extraneous factors like new growth and so forth that would need two bigger amounts. The second key stat that I want to state is an interesting comment that was made during public comment about, you know, the percentage of salaries, the percentage of the budget part, I mean, that goes to salaries. And there's no doubt that's a highly accurate statistic. What's interesting is that in the last five years, the city itself, meaning the non-school part of the city budget, we've added eight full-time employees. And to me, a bit staggering, but the school department has added almost 36 full-time employees in about the same period of time. You can use your own conservative year for what an all-in employee may cost, but I think you'll find that's a pretty big number. And so that's something that I think has really become a substantive budget driver itself and something that's gonna require considerable thought and due diligence going forward. From 2021 to present, we've more than tripled the amount that we spend on principal and interest, our debt. This is non-excluded debt, so these are not the debt exclusions that residents have, so forth. In 2021, we were spending $820,000 a year on principal and interest. In this budget is proposed at 1.25 million and the capital plan calls for even more debt and more spending. You heard in public comment, one person stated that their bill went up 64% in 10 years. I calculated the average, the average single tax home bill, which we took it to use. 50% is what the answer is for 10 years. On the board, one counselor in my board, unfortunately, has tracked much higher than that due to fluctuations and assessments and in particular rise south and then even the island, particularly in the form of land values. And we continue this sort of death spiral, in my opinion, of funding critical infrastructure and projects with free cash, of which we have no guarantee it will be created and no idea how we're gonna spend it until, in some cases, the very last minute. This budget's not happening in a vacuum. We're also facing some substantive water and sewer increases tonight. That's a subject of a separate order. So here are my, so those are some statistics for you to consider. It's not good news, I wish the trend were different, but that's what we're looking at. And the budget is the opportunity to potentially consider how you can change that over a period of time and nothing happened overnight and nothing will happen overnight in the future. To me, this is the affordable housing debate. We spent a lot of time on this floor talking about affordable housing. And this is it. This is the original affordable housing debate, long before there were discussions about things like the Brown School and other things. I see and I see with my own eyes, but I think I hear from residents too, challenges around the middle class. I really appreciate the use of the word sustainable, use that a lot for various things, for trash or environment, but financial sustainability is a thing. And being able to be sustainable means being able to foresee what the future's gonna hold and be able to continue to maintain what we're doing. There is no artificial way to solve this. I think a lot of people here in public comment tonight immediately will jump to the idea that somehow some kind of senior tax program is the solution here. Perhaps it can be part of it, but it can't be the solution. The solution is to look at spending. It has to be a balanced approach in order how you solve this problem and solving just begins getting things in the check. It does not mean stopping the city from progressing, it doesn't mean we don't do any projects, it doesn't mean any of those things. There's also no big law and proposition two and a half. As Budget Chair, I'm thankful we have two and a half because even with two and a half, we can barely hold tax increases for the average resident to about 5% to 7% on average. Without two and a half in place, I can only imagine we'd be able to get more like 10 to 15, which would truly be crushing. Now I get to the difficult part of the night. Based on last night's conversations, but also going through the budget workshop number nine, I see zero appetite on the City Council in the, in the case of bringing together six votes to meaningfully change the budget. During workshop nine, we talked about a couple of lines, it was lamented by at least some that the lines that were being questioned were very small. This is my ninth budget, I've done the paper and toner arguments on the floor. I will not be doing them tonight, it is not a food use of time for the council, nor does it make any meaningful difference in the end. And so without that appetite, it's a bummer, but the reality is that appetite didn't go away tonight. It hasn't been there for the last 10 years. Many of these positions that I mentioned, I fought them along the way, saying, do we really need this position? Can we hold off on it? And unfortunately, once you have it, then you're in the position where, yes, you absolutely need to meet your obligations and if you have a collective bargaining agreement, then you are obligated to meet that. And that is fair and that is square. In addition, we continue to just keep running, running along with projects, funding processes, even though we have no consensus on where the end result is gonna be, what the cost is gonna be and so forth. So every two weeks we go up and we do a similar thing and you're sort of surprised by the outcome. So this is the power we have. I think something you'll hear from councilors tonight is, don't worry, you can get it next year. Next year seems to never come and I've been doing this for a while. So opposed by addressing residents, I do feel that out there, there's some residents that feel they just aren't being heard, like nobody cares about the property taxes. I hear you, I'm trying to balance things out. I'm here on this floor every two weeks doing that, suggesting compromises and trying to find ways. But at the end of the day, this process, this budget, this is where it all comes together. And I don't want to make too big of a bold prediction, but presumptively it will pass tonight as it is. And in the fall, the bills will come and they will have to be paid and we will have another fight about free cash, trying to mitigate as much as we can. So those are my comments and thank you for giving me that chance to speak about.
Yeah, thank you, Councilor President. So yeah, I, I love that we're doing all these statements before the budget. I too, first of all, I hear residents. I'm not so doom and gloom. I have been sitting here through the budget process for now my seventh year. What we have been learning over time, and yes, we have done even like cut toilet paper once. I remember that over at the Market Landing Restrooms, it was to have them. I remember sitting here going line by line. We then learned about union contracts and saying, well, no, we can't touch the union contract ones because those are of lives to go up 2%, 3%. So then we targeted the department heads, anyone who was not unioned, we targeted them. We then tried to look at the percent that they were getting more. What did we end up learning? Well, we ended up learning is that you lose the talent. Kind of the backbone of a municipality is its talent. So yes, the employees are a significant part of this budget. So yeah, you're not gonna see me go after them, not at all. But what you will hear about and what I hope you're gonna do is we are just a city council that sits here and asks the questions. Questions that our residents must be wondering about too. Things that make their quality of life day by day successful. To call DPS, to be able to have their trash picked up, to reach out and, and get the service they want from our city clerk, to get a passport expedited, which is a friend of ours is doing immediately. These are services and they're not for free. I'm sorry, I say that they're not for free. So what is our role here? Is to develop a budget where we could challenge maybe some way of thinking. We're gonna need to start thinking differently. I'm sorry, there are people from day one of canvassing in 2017, I heard about people not being able to stay in their homes. I heard about the stress that it causes to see property values increasing, while for some, that sounds great, right? I mean, we're in that type of society, this community is not the only one facing this. And going to the Massachusetts Municipal Association, the MMA, with 351 communities, send their townsfolk people, senders to the councilors to come and tackle these various issues. So what are the solutions? Yes, you're, you're right, we are as councilors, maybe not in that role to tell administration how to maybe consider other strategies for setting, setting our water and sewer rates. Some communities have separate rate procedures. Some communities have separate rate procedures. Do we look at that? No. But there are solutions, and I encourage, and I tell all my residents out there, those who are really afraid. There are solutions, there are home rule kitchens, there are town squares. If you talk to Jill Brennan, she will sit with you and figure out whether people want to do another abatement. And yeah, things could be changed in the basement, I've heard several situations. So no, I'm not scared here. But what I am looking forward to is having the debate, the conversation about starting to look at things maybe differently than how we did years before. But I am very grateful for the administration, because for me, in my term, in the seventh year of looking at this budget, it has been lean with the consideration that we recognize that this is going to be something with a pipeline of projects, infrastructure. New, new things that we know for a city to grow successfully, we're gonna have to do. But to be honest, you guys, the grants, I'm telling you, grants, look at the source of funding to, I encourage from this, in these projects. So yes, so my message to everyone is, we've done a lot of work here, and we have every resident's back. As we explore ways of, bring new ways to provide tax relief as, as well as other relief with sewer, water rates, anything that goes to the, to the homeowner, so I leave on that, thank you.
Thank you, any other counselors? General comments? Eric, please press it.
Yeah, I'll be very grateful, um, you know. I have severe concerns about the increase in the budget, um, but yes, there are base fuel abatements, there are city workup programs, but they're not saving the seniors that we have today. We're looking at four point three percent increase here, and frankly, all of it is in schools, which makes it so very difficult, and I'm not laying this whole thing or this super grand tenant, right? Their job is to, you know, get the best resources of we can, that they can for our schools. However, we're looking at, at our total two and a half percent increase in our levy is one point six five million dollars for sure, right? Of that schools is taking one point seven three. You heard that correctly, schools is taking all of it plus more. We're letting everything else in the city on receipts. That's not sustainable. You know, even if this wasn't pushing our seniors out of our homes, it's not sustainable. We can only take a two and a half percent levy increase every year. If every penny of it is going to schools, and we're still going to have to pay the actual obligations to the unions outside of schools. We are not gonna be able to do that. There is no solution other than laying people off in the following years if we don't stop this train from going down the tracks. We are putting ourselves into a corner that is a hundred percent unsustainable, and we have to think creatively about ways to make sure that we get in front of that so that it's sustainable for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no further, and Counselor Moreau.
Uh, thank you, I'm slow, uh, just a couple of comments, uh, as I look to this budget, it's over a hundred and two million dollars. Concerned about our spending trends, uh, removing the enterprise accounts. The operating budget is eighty-six point seven million dollars. Represents a four point four percent increase this year, top of four point five percent increase last year, and top of a four point nine percent increase the year before. Three years, thirteen point eight percent increase in spending. Uh, the myth-busting here is tax increases are a direct result of spending increases. Uh, the assessments and the tax rate is how we aggressively, effectively spread that along. A three million dollar house pays more than a five hundred thousand dollar house, if you can find it. Uh, according to the motion changer in Detroit, has a thirteen percent more expensive cost of living that surround the communities, again, going to affordable network. Uh, arguing this. Uh, I do want to thank the public for their comments. Uh, their spending, uh, spending affects their lives, we should be cognizant of that. Our seniors are now in a class called ALIS, asset limited. Uh, that income constrained and sometimes employed. Uh, and so they, they're getting squeezed by all sides. Uh, I want to thank the Budget Finance Committee and Chairman of Technical Equipment, so we're getting great conversations with the department heads. I want to thank the department heads themselves, as they work to advocate for what's needed in their departments. It's a time-consuming process, we all know it, but it is the best way to learn how your money, how your money gets spent. I want to thank the mayor and the administration for the commitment to transparency of this process. School spending is sixty percent of the total, that is capital, insurance, government. Charter school, your tax, against tax, et cetera, all for about twenty percent of the population. By contrast, the departments that we speak with in PWS. That is fire, police, DPS, parks, sustainability, health. Uh, equals about twenty-five percent of the budget itself, not whose operations benefits of, of long-term debt. The must spends to call out that I want to remind folks of is Viva, the free bus costs us a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars a year. The charter school costs us one point seven five million. Retirement costs five point six million dollars a year. Benefits alone cost ten point nine million dollars a year. Excluded debt costs three point two million dollars. Regular debt is one point eight million dollars, so roughly twenty-three point five million dollars is must spend commitments that we've made. Uh, as I mentioned in workshop nine, I would like to see the budget increase close to two point five percent this year. That we made in reflection, spending roughly one point five, uh, to get there and make those cuts, I don't think we have the stomach for it, uh, that's what I took away. Uh, I offered it up the other night, if we take this, settle for this budget, fix it next year, but we won't, because unless we fix it today. Next year is an election year, we're not gonna fix it, actually. So last night, you spent three million dollars in sixty-five minutes of debate. This money was a combination free cash, cash on balancing from other accounts. It was tax money instead, I know people don't like this word, but I call it overtax. It was sitting there waiting for the right money to, right moment to be spent, and last night it passed it. Uh, my final thought is, if we don't have an appetite to take the hard steps to get to the one point five million dollar reduction, then I hope we can just, uh, save every little time that ever gets in the final vote. Uh, thank you very much.
Okay, I'm gonna ask, uh, Counselor Anderson to jump on the podium here, I'd like to speak. Um, it was, it's been a little present, like, on to your security. Um, yeah, just, uh, this is my thirteenth budget, well, the number thirteen, um, just, just I hear everything that the people are saying, and this is really the room where you get all of these different perspectives. Uh, you know, uh, there's some song that, uh, uh, everybody's, uh, no one's, no one's right, and no one's wrong. Uh, I think it's some, something from the sixties, um, but I will say uh, I think this is a very lean budget, I appreciate the administration's due diligence, we had a lot of questions last year about certain salaries, there were a few last year that went up a little bit. Uh, more than certainly inflation, and that will set, achieve, achieve some level of market uh, equity, and again, retaining people, um, because people are the backbone of city government, absolutely, a lot of the faces here, uh, tonight are very exemplary of that. Um, but just a comment, my, my, my read on this is the city side of the budget is, uh, a proposed four point seven percent increase in on school side, school side, which includes obviously our own, by our own, I guess, um. In way you're in Essex Tech, uh, that's a four point six percent increase, so everything's going up a little bit, I, I don't, I'm not, I don't know that everything is going to schools, I think it's across the board. I budget, I, I, you know, I know the school committee struggled with it, wasn't happy about, um, the percentage of paying the double, there were a few people. Uh, but I think this is the best way to go. As we go through these line items, um, there were definitely some opportunities for savings, and those would be helpful in, in maybe some large cuts happen through this process, yes, that would be good on the tax rate side when we get to that in the fall and winter. Um, but there are some opportunities, and so I think we, as we go through this. Um, you know, I'm certainly gonna listen and consider voting, I favor those cuts uh, on a case-by-case basis, but, um, I just wanted to appreciate all my colleagues, again, House received, uh, for this. And, uh, the administration for helping us get through this and all the departments together, and make it happen on a day-to-day basis, so that's it. Pretty much be quiet. Okay. So we'll start, um, let's do the lines, keep one front of there, uh, Budget Workshop. We're, we're, you know. That's fine, I know many of you are left person at the moment. Um, and although I've been in thirteen budgets, I've never actually run this part of it, so if anyone, uh, doesn't like the way I'm going too fast or too I'm gonna go general and just kind of, I read the budget categories. Going too fast or too slow, even, I can't keep up, um. Your question changer, and then we'll pause at the end, see you over at Money Wise, and, uh. And, uh, take the next step, all right, so I'm gonna start, uh. On page one of twenty-five, and that would be with City Council. Uh, so again, if any counselor wants to make a motion to amend, uh, with a decrease. Uh, please shut that up, because I'm looking down at my list. Um, and then, well, if we have a second, then we'll be able to page that, all right, we're starting with, uh.
President, maybe for the public's perspective too, when you go through the department, we have what the total percent increase was, and that's on this sheet here that I told you. Do you have?
I do. Okay, that's fine, uh, so we'll start, City Council, um, versus Personnel Services, the description is a uh, zero point two percent increase. City Council, I'm sorry, City Council, did I say Personnel Services? Um, so City Council Personnel Services is point, a zero point two percent increase. City Council Purchase and Services. Uh, zero percent increase. Uh, Mayor's Department, Personnel Services. There is a about fifteen point six percent increase. Mayor's Department Purchase and Services, there is a forty-one percent decrease. Mayor's Office. Sorry, Counselor President.
Yeah, I was just gonna give a suggestion, uh, on spoil alert, I don't need any cuts tonight, because frankly, I'm like, I get a lot of so I, I think it's just an act of utility to you know, suggest cuts that we know aren't gonna pass, maybe in, in just a time, if you could ask he, rather than, or sort of go, I, it's just a suggestion, but maybe if people have cuts, we can cut to where those cuts are.
Um, how about we do it in the order, I'll just call the, call the department, and, uh, I'll leave the, uh, the, the category behind and send increases proposed, it's on the tech, and everyone, uh, on your council's following on, so. You'll be able to do that, all right, so Mayor's Department. General Administration. Budget contingencies. Auditor's Department. Assessors Department. Regent's Department. Information and Technology Department, if you want. Human Resources. City Purchase Department. Board of Registries. License Commission. Observation Commission. Planning Board. Foning Board. Planning and Development. Legal Department. Police Department. Fire Department. Building Department. Emergency Management. Animal Control. Parking Park. Pool Department. That's it, North Shore Tech School. Reverb Tech School. DPS Highway. DPS, no one ice. Health Department. Payability. Counselor on Asian. Right, and Youth Services. Veterans Department. Library Department. DPS Parks. Historical Mission. Debt Exclusion. Ordinary Debt Service. Retirement Board. Currents. Moving to Enterprise Funds. Upper Master Department. DPS Sewer. DPS Water. Both of you have their five-minute recesses? The moon, the open, the fair.
I don't.
All right, we're gonna start with the next.
So our our five minute recess is over. It's um we've entered the the amounts and so the motion on the floor recently was to approve. Uh that it's been seconded and now we got the numbers uh.
That's okay, yeah, so uh in the original order, there are a number of blank lines based on the process we just undertook, I'm gonna heat out the numbers here. So the first sentence, that the city of New York report raised inappropriate in the general fund, the sum of eighty six million seven hundred sixty four thousand one hundred eighty nine dollars and fourteen cents. As the operating budget for fiscal year twenty five and then um running from July one to June thirty of two thousand twenty five, of which thirty eight million three hundred seventy six thousand seven hundred thirty five dollars even. Is appropriated to the school department, so those are the first two links. Now I'm gonna go down this list here, under the further that areas, under each of those numbers, downtown paid parking fund. So these are amounts, the following sums will be appropriated from other available funds. Uh paid parking fund, one million twenty seven thousand seven hundred eighty seven dollars and two cents. Recreational revolving fund, one hundred forty six thousand five hundred seventy nine dollars and seventy cents. Waterfront parking fund, twenty five thousand dollars even. Water enterprise fund, eighty four thousand. Seven hundred eighty seven dollars and fifty one cents, sewer enterprise fund, one hundred and four thousand nine hundred sixty eight dollars and fifty seven cents. Harbor master enterprise fund, seven thousand four dollars and thirty seven cents. So that includes the top part with one exception. Yes, parkland fund needs to be amended and added in. And that is in the top further that, that was added during the budget process, that amount is eighteen thousand dollars, also probably involved in that workshop, that funds align in D P S. Uh so that purpose. Now, the bottom numbers, the the three, these are the total amounts for the enterprise funds, so that the city of New York report raised appropriate following sums in the enterprise funds as. The respective operating budget of each fund for F Y twenty five, water enterprise fund, six million nine hundred sixty four thousand six hundred sixty one dollars and thirty three cents. Sewer enterprise funds, eight thou- eight million two hundred ninety four thousand seventy two dollars and eighty nine cents. Harbor master enterprise fund, five hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars. Nine hundred five hundred sixty seven thousand nine hundred fifty one dollars and thirty one cents. And finance directive by the way of this. We that completes the filling in of all of the fields and.
Okay, so uh that motion had been made seconded earlier, thank you for having those amounts. For the roll call. The roll call in approval in order five fifty nine. As I just written, I just read by council meeting. Council on.
Yes.
Council on Lane. Council McCollum. Council Preston.
No.
Council Shan. Council Wright. Council Z. Also Dany.
Yes.
Also Rans.
Yes.
Council Hammond.
Yes.
Council Cameron.
Yes.
Meeting six, I believe, uh motion passes. Thank you, uh we will turn to. Uh order five seventy, motion approved order five seventy F Y twenty five to twenty nine capital improvement plan. Clear, excuse myself on this. Okay, so uh who's the second on that? Are there uh any amendments that councillors would wanna offer on C I P?
I'd just like to make a comment again, I'm not gonna be lengthy as I was with the budget, but I just wanna say that. Uh I have personally uh in my votes over the years on C I P gone back and forth between the idea that the capital plan is a planning document and should be taken in that light. Two more recently being asked by residents, doesn't the capital plan say that the project has money in it, so I. Put back on my wagon on that and uh we'll not be supporting the C I P tonight, it's high time that we start funding this thing. The reason we've gotten ourselves into such a capital hole in the first place was that capital was treated as an optional, we'll do it if and when we can or so long. And the last thing, just to give a statistic, do you mean bloom at all? The C I P is a five year plan, it calls for approximately one hundred thirteen million dollars of spending over the next five years to grow maintenance and service. Um I don't can't find a calculator where I can pencil that with or without grants and make it work. And so for those two reasons, um and this is adopted by resubmission, like a subject, I just wanted to speak about this, thank you.
I'm also not gonna be supporting this. Uh as it sits, I've been saying for um ever since COVID twenty twenty, everything has changed. I don't know why we're still already on a plan that's been continuously rolling. Since before I was on council, um I think it makes sense to heal this entire plan up and go back, swear on. To see where our priorities fall if it's good. Um the amount of money that's in this, I mean, it's always been true, like the novelty money. Not gonna sit here and cut things and then so on, so on, but I wanna see the whole plan going up and redone um with our priorities in mind.
Councilman, for their comments, councilman.
Um yeah, thank you council president, so just to remind people, the C I P is a municipal practice across the state with municipalities. It's a five year plan so that people and publicly, you actually require types even do a hearing for the C I P. So that people are not blindsided by the type of projects and what the city is looking to invest in. So actually, if folks have not looked at it, and I encourage even the residents. The C I P for me, and again, if you go back over the decade, let let at the last ten years. You'll see the projects and you'll see the importance of priority, so we're always told to look at this till year twenty twenty five. Because that's where the funding sources are defined for the council to be looking at. And it's actually reflected in every key that we've done so far, so from an educational perspective. I understand there's some stances people wanna take, but C I P is good practice, good planning practice, and I really am very grateful. During the budget hearing, but the departments are the core of. They also talk about their C I Ps at middle, so we learn a lot during this whole process. From their overall planning, like how are they looking at from the investment needed to do the job that they're slated to do. And and the nice thing is. Like everyone said, it's not mandated, we're not, this is not something that's been codified, it does become very fluid and flexible depending on the priorities.
Further comment on the C I P?
I'm just gonna give an example of what I'm talking about. Um in this uh the police dispatch center, which has been kicked down the road, uh which is a public safety function, I've seen the dispatch center itself. I moved that out personally, two years in a row, two to the next year, and it's kicked into uh into. Down the road again, so for that reason alone, I don't have any trust in this document either, as far as accuracy. Um our priorities or not our priorities, it seems to fluctuate year to year depending on. Political pressure maybe or what. A lot of this this week is real, but um so again, that's why I'm opposing this, and I'm asking not for it to be eliminated, but to be redone. And prioritized, given the fact that the cost of everything has gone up since twenty twenty, so for that, so.
Council on.
Thank you, and um so I just wanna make one comment and point out that um. You know. We've been at both of these for quite a while, the the budget and C I P. You know, collectively. And. No one's made any cuts, no one's made any suggestions, no one's found any solutions, no one's come up with any other way to do it. But in the eleventh hour, on this floor, I know it's within our range to do so, but it seems a little. I don't know, what 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 are we just several last, you know, several weeks doing, if not. Going through this and finding home and. Deciding, you know, week by week until the public should have been. Conversation last Thursday, and we didn't have that conversation. So but we're gonna have it now. And I guess. That's a little disingenuous, you know. And it's and this is at everybody. Yeah, not not at anyone or two. It's um to 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 be there, so this is just my general. Uh we just had a little bit of space that almost split on budget. But where were those comments, I heard, where were those comments? Ten minutes ago, when we have the opportunity to cut anything in that. So. I'm just not really sure what. I mean, we just would just say now and then we go back to our things then, another six to seven weeks that review. Or just say now and and the legend or the like projects, like. I just, and you understand why at the very last day, this is the purpose, I wanted to have all this time. To bring out these issues, that's.
Yeah, thank you, I I wanna a little bit react to that, but also um give my own thoughts here, so firstly, I would remind all of us that. All eleven of us are available to make suggestions of cuts, not any one in particular, that's that all of us are available to that discussion. Um and frankly, in the lead up to the budget, believe me, I very much wanted to make cuts in this budget, but in the. Process of leading up to this, it was very clear to me that nothing was going to pass. That's why I made that decision to to not make us sit here and go through that brutal process. Uh suggesting cuts and then having every single one of those cuts enough six bucks. And every single one of those cuts not happen, so. You know, that that's where I am at this, that's why I went into site with the 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 thinking of. Not imposing any cuts and not going through that brutal brutal exercise, but also knowing that if there were no cuts suggested by councillors. Frankly, in the sixth majority that might have had an appetite to do such a thing, if there were no cuts coming from that side. Then I was not gonna be a yes on the budget, um because as I very clearly stated at the beginning of the meeting. It I do not think this is in any way sustainable, and I think we are setting ourselves up for a disaster in the ensuing years. Um but you know, it is what it is, I will be one of eleven opinions here, but that's where I'm leaning on this and. And frankly, um to the C I P document, you know, I I really appreciate it as a planning tool, I certainly want to be certain that. We continue to have a C I P. However, I what is such a struggle for me with this particular C I P, and frankly. I hope the administration is listening, understanding everything, is that we don't have any prioritization. And you know, here we sit, we've just adopted this logic, which is way too big of an increase in my personal opinion. We talk endlessly about this rec center and we wanna get the rec center done, we have, you know. Seventy million dollars water and sewer infrastructure that needs to get done, we have a thirty million dollar. Fire headquarters that needs to get done, we absolutely cannot afford to do all of these things, but just. No matter what calculator you use, we cannot afford to do these things. And so to have a C I P that includes all these projects, but sets no prioritization to them. Is also an exercise of creativity, because there's no point to it. Again, I appreciate the planning process of it, we need to be able to have a plan, but without some sort of set of prioritization. And taking some of the things off the list that we can't afford to do and moving up the listings that we have to get done. There's, there's just no point in it, and therefore I'm not gonna support C I P.
Thank you. Tony, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, I I I do wanna react to that, and I, okay, it's a fair question you wanna ask, I think. Personally, as chair, if it didn't feel like this was brewing, I don't know what meetings one went to, I would say every one of them seemed very obvious to me, we had a split. Um feeling about budget and about the capital plan, but more importantly and more immediately. Instead of getting up and trying to sort of say, well, why won't councillors just support this, it's your responsibility to fix it? Why doesn't somebody else propose an amendment, or why doesn't somebody make an argument? For a hundred and fifty four million dollars of spending in five years, whether you wanna argue that it's the right amount of spending, the wrong amount, or how about just how you could actually fund that? How about that conversation? I get up every two weeks, I write ordinances, I try and create compromise, it's not always a responsibility of a handful of people, it's all eleven people, so. This thing is likely to pass six to five, if that's a just. Sort of acceptable margin, then accept it, but own the fact that the yeses vote for it, the yeses voted for the tax increases in the budget. The yeses make care of here on the C I P and so be it, that is the process, I am not happy with the C I P, I am not gonna sit here and fix it. Just so I can get to theater on every cut and then end up with a with a document that doesn't make any sense, somebody should please, timely, one of my colleagues, please stand up and argue for the C I P. Even make any sense for me out of some of the projects that are in here that have either been deferred or have been moved up or have been kicked out or have doubled in cost like fires station one. Somebody make an argument like that, instead of asking why councillors, in a sense, are not doing their job.
Yeah, I just wanna, there's a couple of things I I just wanna um talk a little bit about, I I'm. I too like the council from work too, I'm I'm finding this a very interesting dynamic, uh I feel like there's a. A glaring um pointing of sides. And what I find interesting, having gone, I'm I'm a member of budget finance, uh we lost five other budget finance finance person. But we, every hearing, and they're all recorded, so we can watch this. Because I'm sure I'm not missing something, we had every department come through, we asked questions, I asked questions, all eleven of us. Asked really good questions. So um, when it came to cuts, we tried to understand, well, you know, what's the increase here? What was the reason? We didn't talk about the cuts we wanted to see. So granted, I was not at the Thursday meeting, but I did start trying to watch it. And trying to see, okay, what's people's appetite, because normally that's where you kind of started. But a couple of years ago in budget, we didn't even do that, and on the floor, we went page by page, and people offered them cuts. I did as well. But I feel like the group did not want to do that, or they were like holding their cards close, wanting someone else to do it. And I will tell you many times in the past, somebody may have an item, and I would be like, hey, that sounds really good, because we don't get into that debate. You know, we listen, we take information in, but if someone said, I want to cut this, and this is why. I sat in this seat and I said, sure, we do the vote. Sometimes it's been seven, sometimes it's been eight, sometimes it's been four, it's never, it's lost. But I feel like there was already an agreement made here by you to do this. So I'm gonna call it out. It's very unusual. This is the first time I'm seeing this, and you guys can watch our last meetings. So I think there is some message trying to be said. Fine, let's say that's happening. But the CIP, I think the counselors um, that are posting it have always never liked it. So. I mean, we could go through, we, when we have the departments here. If you look at it, priorities, I, I do want to point out that every project does have something called priority. So every sheet has a priority. Some say enhancement, some say maintenance. And then the other thing is they have the year. Each of the fiscal years of when that's anticipated to be spent. Not sure how much one can have a planning document, but you're right, this is not going to be set in stone. It's not static. It is dynamic. Why? Because this is all fluid. We can't codify this because change, things and priorities change. We know that. But it's something. And so I'm, I'm just a little, again, uh, I just find it all very interesting. I, I think at the end, we all want to do. What's best for the city, and I hear that from all eleven of my colleagues. And I respect and value you, and I'm sorry if you felt like you couldn't even offer your, your suggestions, your cuts. I'm sorry you couldn't do that. But listen, you have it, and hold it here and here.
Here, councilor, yeah, so um. I was at the meeting Thursday, and I did offer a, uh, so suggested. Uh, cuts and a pathway to get there. And in that debate that happened, and I did it upfront, so we wouldn't waste anyone's time. And I was told by the members that were there that there was no appetite to do any cuts. It wasn't an appetite. It's kind of a million and a half dollars. It wasn't an appetite to go through line item by line item to get nickels and dimes out of, you know, supplies and toilet paper bowls and all that kind of stuff. Um, we asked it. And the answer was, we're not interested. So it's not, it's no conspiracy here. It's just. There's no interest in trying to cut a million and a half dollars of spending in there, then. I had made my offer. I had given three or four examples of how I'd like to get there. Um, I was debated up against and lost. Uh, so be it. So I'm, I'm not gonna reiterate that along the way. We did try to make cuts. Uh, but, um, so I, I'm unsure why we think this is the last minute. We knew for Thursday that this is gonna be the result tonight. Um, given what was going on. So I, I, again, I'm just being insistent with what I see in here. And I understand that, um, it is frustrating for some. Uh, but, you know, I didn't. If, if, if I was supposed to offer cuts, I tried that Thursday, and they were rejected. But I didn't hear anybody else offering cuts. And they, I offered cuts last night, the three million dollars that was spent. And they were all rejected. So not really an appetite to cut anything. From my perspective. That's, I'm just speaking for myself. So.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to respond to that, and this is for everyone. Moving ahead, it's in this budget hearing. With all, we're, and I was not there Thursday, so I'm sorry I missed your cuts suggestion. Um, but this is normally where it happens. Were all of these department heads there on Thursday? I don't know. You guys can tell me. No, they weren't, right? Yeah, normally this is where we do it. So so you guys know, it's not a piece committee meeting, because not everyone can be there. But here in this chamber in front with all the department heads who pay the time to be here, this is what we do.
Okay. Any further discussion? I can ask a, um. Clarifying question of the director of finance. What happens if this CIP does not pass?
According to the city charter, um, the city council. Shall adopt a capital improvement program. I believe it's before June thirtieth. Uh, it doesn't say what happens if, if the body does not adopt.
I'm gonna start out from the chair, council. Well, I think you've heard me say I've been through thirteen budgets.
Wait, council president, he has to sit, and then he has to recognize me. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'll be, thank you. That's kind of a nice set of sitting soul cheer, um. So back in the day, we did not have a CIP. I, I don't know if it was mandated, and we didn't do it, but we didn't do it, and when it came around, um, I'd been around Ethan Mannings first. A year or so, two thousand and nine or ten. It was quite a revelation, because otherwise we were just getting. Stuff heat at us, uh, last minute that we knew nothing about, uh, and it was a real mess. It was a lot of drafting with departments. Uh, and it, and it was literally a hot mess. So, um. You know, I looked at what the CIP was ten years ago. I think it was eighty-one million dollars. Now, I, I think it's one fifty-four. Uh, over, over the following, uh, ten years. Um. And yeah, it's grown, but again, it's, it's a plan. The pieces where we appropriate the money, we have our, our second bite of the apple. There are others that somehow sometimes are, are grant funded or. Other elements of funding that don't pass through our, our appropriation lens, but. Um, it's, it's really just a planning document. So yeah, I don't know. It says, you know, that's why I ask. Uh, if, if it doesn't pass, I don't know, you know, where we go, um, other than heading out. I don't know. I'm sure if somebody has a best one, I'd be constituted in the last few years, but, um, again. I'm not happy with everything in it. I don't think we're gonna end up paying for everything that's in it over the next number of years. Uh. I didn't have time to go back and look at some of the older ones, but a lot of these things do fall by the wayside. Several things fell from the wayside from. Last year that we discussed, and but again, I think it's just the planning and prioritization document. There's lots of prioritization and sequencing. Of funding and possible funding sources. So I think it's a very useful document. My, I'm certainly gonna vote.
Councilman.
You, you have to stay out for the rest of them. Yeah, um, so yeah, previous years, um, we worked collaboratively, where we actually went and cut things. So that's really what we're here for tonight, you guys. I, I was ready to speak here till eleven P M, and it looks like you're, you're kind of shorting it, but. What we've done before, and I think my colleagues remember this, we actually would go through. And we would zero out items, and so this is to, to get folks to adopt this, what do you want to do? Please share it. Because you, you can work together to make it happen. Just because I don't see anything to cut. Doesn't mean we need to sit there and say, well, then no one has an appetite. I won't get six votes. That's not how it works. We have to have a dialogue. So I encourage people, say what you want to cut, and let's get it done, and you can pass it.
Thank you, um. So. I, I'm just always perplexed at how these debates go. So now we're arguing about whether we should have a CIP. That's mandated by charter. That isn't the debate tonight. This plan is the debate tonight. This plan calls, for example, doing millions and millions of dollars of water projects. That people aren't really sure. This plan calls to build a rec center on fifty-nine Mo Street, around which there is no consensus. Is the at-large council suggesting that we can resolve those issues in the next two hours? It can't be both ways. It's a planning document. It doesn't matter too much, but also you have to accept all the pieces that are in it. It's just, it, it's really unfair to try and take counselors' votes. This is the power that I have, this one vote. I can't speak for anybody else. I can't do anything for anybody else. This is the vote that I have. I don't want to make any cuts. Why don't we flip the card and say, why don't you make some cuts and see if you can get more people to sign on board and vote it. At a better margin, if that's what's gonna make you happy, or accept the fact that it may pass on a narrow margin, or may not pass at all. That's. Actually how it works. It keeps coming back to you make the cut. I'm not doing anything. I came here tonight for actually a short night. And I concur very much so with the word five counselor. If you couldn't read the room on Thursday, maybe it was your first night, it was painfully obvious what was happening. I'm here partially as chair, just make a perfect process. You've had plenty of long nights. Sometimes there's a value to them, and sometimes there isn't. Tonight wasn't the night.
I just kind of want to respond, and maybe it's for my clarity for some of you, but. I don't know how well reads the room, other than what it was saying. Maybe there was a lot of facial expressions that I missed. Maybe there was a lot of eye rolls that I missed. But nobody said anything substantive. To indicate that this is where we react tonight. So I just want to go.
Yeah, thank you. Um. So I, I just got back from vacation today. And so I missed, uh, both last night as well as Thursday, but, you know. This is news for all of you, but as the, we, that we as counselors lead into these sorts of discussions. We have offline conversations with each other, obviously keeping the meeting logs in, um, in my mind, and. But we, we try to feel each other out and understand their thing, their goal. And I just yesterday, while on vacation, had a conversation with one of the counselors that's speaking now. And in the vein of how can we make cuts? I want to make cuts. How can we make cuts? And at the end of the day. Nothing. We didn't get anywhere where we felt that there was an opportunity. And, and I said. Is there an appetite for cuts? And the answer was, no, there is no appetite for cuts. So I don't understand how you can say that to me yesterday. And then expect me to come here tonight and make a whole bunch of cuts. I, I. In good faith, tried to find a way to, to find a compromise, find a way to make cuts. Well, to be clear, I was pretty tough on the superintendent when schools was here, sorry. But I would have very much liked to have seen some cuts out of schools, because that's where all the money went this year was to schools. But if it's not gonna happen, if it's not gonna pass. Then why would I stand up here and waste everybody's time to go through cuts? Again, all eleven of us have that opportunity to make cuts tonight. Nobody made a cut. I, spoiler alerted before at the very beginning of this, and said that I wasn't gonna make any cuts. Because I didn't think any of them would pass, and it was an exercise of utility. But again, I don't understand how you could say to me just yesterday, a couple of times I'm on vacation. That there was no appetite for cuts, and we couldn't come to making them cuts. And then tonight say. I'm, you know, creating some part of some big conspiracy, and how dare I not make cuts tonight? Yeah, that's entirely unfair.
Yeah, I speak, um, that was me. I was asked if I would cut the school. Um, did that, did I, was I holding them out? No. So what I find so weird is, yeah, we talk to each other, but we still bring it here into this chamber. So I was waiting for it, actually. So I could hear what the amount is. That's what I'm saying, like. I feel bad for the public. He really jipped them from a conversation. Because for some reason, there was already something going on. You know how many people I want to talk to? So this to me is so bizarre. I can't even respond. It's so bizarre. But to say that youth services, which I think is really the reason the CIP is kind of stinky. So we're, we're somehow now have brought CIP and youth services together. Because that's what I was talking about now in terms of cuts. Let's go with this CIP. You already passed it, but everyone missed their opportunity. But we have now the CIP. And I already heard that the stinky cheese is in here, which is rec center. And I'm telling you guys, get over it. It's in here. Go after something else, but let's get this done. I, I think the public deserves the transparency. Bring it out. Bring it on.
Thank you. Um, I, I think counselors have spent enough time defending. I guess what they didn't do, but they were somehow obligated to do. Um, speaking only for myself. Bored myself the way I wanted to in the budget. I voted my points at the end. More ones represented here tonight. I split both for kind of why I voted the way I did. And I don't have any regrets, and I'd like to move the question on CIP.
So the court of justice, the master of the law was to accept CIP?
No, actually, move the question. I'm approving. Uh, five seventy, and that's the first and second, and shall I go for a roll call?
Please.
This is our movement question.
Yes.
Council Elaine, yes to the question. Yeah, to the question, Council McCollum?
Yes.
Council Preston?
Yes.
Council Shane?
Yes.
Council Wright?
Yes.
Council Z, yes. Council Dany?
Yes.
Council Grantis?
Yes.
Council Hammond, for the record, recused, and Council, uh, Kim.
Yes.
But this vote, because you'll vote on, uh, approving five seventy. Correct?
Council Wright.
So, um. In my opinion, CIP has always been a wish list, is the most bill funding. And even if they are identifying the CIP. They're all subject to appropriation by us. So, um, it really is, um. It, it's, you can take it one way or the other. You can take it as a man document. You take it as, as a wish list. Uh, it, it has no teeth. There's nothing binding about it. So, um. So. What, what, to me, what's really concerning is that it's a hundred and fifty million dollars.
I think debate is closed. So we are most approve, uh, five seventy, so-called CIP. Are we ready? Council Khan?
Yes.
Council Elaine? Council McCollum?
No.
Council Preston?
No.
Council Shane?
Yes.
Council Wright?
No.
Council Z? Council Dany?
Yes.
Council Grantis?
Yes.
Council Hammond's recused, Council Cameron?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, one, two, three, four, five, motion fair. Leave this to.
Somebody get councilor. Motion approved, word five seventy-nine, water sweet rates. Um, just very agree. I know this is a little bit of a different night, but. Um, this was technically not a budget item. So the committee did discuss this on a few occasions, as we talked about during the budget process. This is, um, part and parcel with the water enterprise fund and sewer enterprise budgets, which were just passed in the last hour or so. Uh, but just for the benefit of the public, so they understand. Um, the changes, and I'm not gonna read all of them, just the most, maybe the most innate ones, but FY twenty-four was six dollars sixty-eight cents. Hundred cubic feet for the first three thousand, and twenty-five hundred. Is seven point five zero, which is about a nine percent increase. And then on the sewer side, uh, for the same amount of cubic feet, three thousand, first cubic feet, and a hundred cubic feet goes from ten eighteen to ten dollars and fifty cents, using round numbers. Three percent increase. Uh, on average, uh, and finance director provided us, we considered a lot of information about the average bill going up by about six percent. Uh, there's also changes to the ultimate service charges from twenty-five to twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents. And then there are larger increases, um, for so-called non-residential, commercial. Thirty to thirty-three dollars, uh, service charge at a hundred twenty-five to one thirty-seven fifty per quarter. I, I won't even try and summarize the lengthy conversation about retaining earnings and how these things kind of comport with one another. Uh, but because this was moved after the budget to allow the budget to process, so the, the foundational element of that is this, and, uh, that's where we're standing today.
Yeah, I, I will, uh, support these, uh, I've been part, parcel of these discussions for a while. Uh, you know, I, I am proud to say that it is an increase in rates, uh, but we do, we're in that conundrum. Uh, we increased rates, and if people don't use as much water, we can increase rates more on the way. Part of the discussion, which I, I, I think, uh, share is, uh, and, and to the council's point. Uh, which is that we're trying to think differently along the way. And as part of that discussion, the challenge of order sewer commission to think differently as to how they go about, uh, crafting rates along the way. Uh, it was too late for this type of cycle, uh, but, you know, everyone's agreed that, uh, we're trying to avoid this conundrum of. Higher rates, lower usage along the way, and trying to, uh, find a happy medium. So, uh, I will support it, uh, today, and, uh.
Yes, thank you, Council President. Um, yeah, so, um, the one meeting I was able to participate in. There are other communities, and I think I mentioned it during the, um, opening of our budget conversations, that there is. Different blocks of grades based on the category of consumption. There's also a different grade for seniors. So I encourage, and I kind of started compiling a list of other communities, and I will share that. So I encourage and I kind of started to compiling a list of other communities, and I will share that as well. As well as the water sewer commission folks who um are here tonight, who I thank very much for all their work in this. So I do think that also a reminder is. Water, water especially, is a user control item. And part of it too is reduction of water and uses. I'm not saying you won't be do, but my husband does time my teenage daughter's shower. But there are little measures because of consumption that's user-based can also be educated to be user-controlled. So those are kind of the aspects of education, exploring different grade structures that I really hope we'll see next year, and I will help be part of that solution. Thank you.
Council Z?
Thank you. I just wanted to um say my my part of the answer to the committee report. So there are four things that are important to me. Um, number one is. Um, I will, I will support a mid-year further adjustment of these rates. For me, this is an annual cycle. I know during committee, this was discussed, like, hey, we can look at this again. November or December or January, and that's been brought up in the past. I. I don't, I think it's too jarring, first of all, for residents. I also think if if we can't set rates for a year at a time, it's it's sort of. It's a bit much, and also it's hard for the council to bet mid mid-year. So um I will support these, but I look at them as an annual change. That's me. Um, number two is, I mean, I put my flag in the ground as far as really getting a serious look at the second meter or uh uh so our so-called duct meter. Um, when uh meters get replaced, uh which is, you know, possibly looked at next year or two. Um, so I'd like to just put that flag in the ground again. Number three is, I wanna put a bit of a sharper point on the new paradigm. I think the the thing that was most clear in the budget hearings this this year is how much of the water and sewer departments are fixed to cost. Meaning it's not the high users that are causing the cost in the system. Unfortunately, there's a ready-to-serve kind of cost that just exists. You have to have people, infrastructure. Whether one drop of water comes through the pipe for a million, you you have to have it there. And so. I am strongly urging a look at a change in that paradigm, um, that A, will align better. What people pay with where the actual cost exists. And B, um, can hopefully create some more stability for the water and sewer enterprise funds going forward because. Basically, hoping for usage is no longer a good business strategy because the usage doesn't exist, and if anything, it's going down. So I guess it's unpredictable, and at worst, it's declining. Um, but again, if you wanna turn that faucet on and get water, it has to be ready to serve. So that that is something that's important to me. And then the last thing is, I I am asking for some more, you know, frankly, discipline and tightness around, hopefully having some project manager or consultants that there's a considering lot of conversation around that. I think there were a lot of balls being juggled in the air. I did D P S a lot of credit for trying to now bring that in, but I I hope that if that continues to be the case. Particularly our water projects. And I think as a councillor, I I center agree that there's at some point, you have to pick a project and go, and there's gonna be risk that we picked the wrong one, or we should have focused on something else. But we just can't keep all the irons in the fire. The the costs are simply too high. So um with that, I'm probably gonna get support as well.
Thank you, President. I am, I just wanna agree with both my colleagues from Budget and Finance and um two key points. One is, I also have been looking at um. Different models from other communities uh for uh different block rates, discounts, and opportunities to kind of rethink and innovate on how we approach this. Inclusive of uh different fee structures altogether, um besides the beginning of usage. Um, I think that is the. Um, responsibility of uh our water sewer commission. I appreciate the work of this and I appreciate the work of our finance director and D P S leadership getting us this proposal. But attached to the water sewer rates is the five-year plan. That five-year plan essentially has us stepping rates up and up and up and up and up on a two-block scale. Um, and so I just wanna say I will support this tonight. I will not support this any a year from now. If we haven't done a lot of hard looking at different options and and evaluated those. If that's the right thing to do and the only path forward, then we'll have that conversation in a year. But I don't think just simply coming back to this and saying, cool, we got a plan. We're gonna now have enough funding in our retained earnings to be able to fund in debt to do some of these big projects. So it's the worthy aspiration. I'm glad we're thinking about it. It's it is it is going to save us from having to take that funding from other sources if we can achieve it. Um, I just wanna make sure that everybody, come on, have them all in the room tonight, uh can hear uh my voice on the need to um. Put pencils and paper on some different approaches that we can look at throughout it. Thank you.
Council Wright?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I just wanna make everyone aware of the concept of a low managing returns. So the higher you raise the price, the lower the consumption goes. It's just. Uh, and then you reach a point where 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 um, you know, where the consumption starts, all you can do is. Is raise the price because the cost of everything continues to go up. So uh, that that's the conundrum. That's the, that's the, that's what you have to deal with. The 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 more you're in, you know. The more you raise the price, the less people consume and the more you have to raise the price again. So it is a vicious cycle. And uh, as Warren, uh. You know. Looking at it mainly through a different lens, but uh it it it's it's just the race to the bottom if we if we continue to uh. You know, to. Come up with that as your solution.
Or, sorry, I forgot my second point, which was for uh the chair's uh point on uh secondary uh meter for irrigation measurement. Like, it's also, I want to support that. We're gonna be replacing them up like with that. Thank you. Any further discussion?
Going in here?
Thank you. Yes, um, there's a mention earlier about uh somebody else having uh different rates for um seniors, and I think that's something we should really. Discuss and figure out um that sooner than later. I think that could go a really long way. Um. The conversation tonight, you know. I don't think anyone in this room would disagree that, or somebody would disagree with every person on Sunday and um. You know, we we do need to find a way to. Find ways like this with water rates. Um. We help shoot sword. That's that.
Councilor?
Uh, thank you. I've uh. Pass it from there to, um, I I I think it's a, I think it's not just the seniors. I think in every way it's getting squeezed. We're getting squeezed in our personal lives. They've squeezed, uh, you know, our our own personal income isn't picking up inflation. Uh, those people who are fixing incomes uh are also struggling. So I, all these choices are very difficult things to to come up with. Um. Uh. I if we're going, if we're gonna make any significant progress on slowing the rate of increase to all of our city services. Um. I would, I would ask. Very sincerely ask for those people who uh one, who who agree with me that they need to slow down the rate of increase in our expenditures. To tell, to tell us, tell, tell all of us, what services are you willing to forego? What services do you think you can level up? Because to keep everything the way that it is now. And and the way that things are increasing in cost. Is is going to bring us right back to this place uh next year. The 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 other thing that is mentioned in the budget process is that, well, seventy-five percent of every budget is is uh, you know, is is contractual. I I challenge the administration, I challenge the school committee. To really. Work hard. To keep those contractual increases to where we can live with them. Because a a three-three-three. Union contract, we all know, when there were steps and ladders. Uh, is a horrible five percent. Increase. That's what's reflected in the budget today. So, um. That's what's controlling. Seventy-five percent of our budget is controlled. Uh, and and we have to either have a reduction in in bodies. Or we have to acknowledge, uh, you know, on the school side. I was on the school committee for four years. We've never had uh even a conversation about increasing class sizes. It's the biggest driver of the school budget. Uh, those are all the things that can have a meaningful impact. Uh, when when we examine next year's budget.
Further discussion?
The roll call on about motion. The roll call and motion approved order five seventy-nine water sewer rates. Council Khan?
Yes.
Council Lane?
Yes.
Council McCollum?
Yes.
Council Preston?
Yes.
Council Shannon?
Yes.
Council Wright?
Yes.
Council Z?
Yes.
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 Council Dunn?
Yes.
Council Grant?
Yes.
Council Harmon?
Yes.
Council Cameron?
Yes.
Sir, motion passed.
Uh, motion approved order five eighty-one municipal fee schedule. Second. Motion to amend, um, there are two items in here that uh as a result of the words that passed last night. Number one is. And I'm, I looked at the chair, of course, if I make a mistake, but it's ten dollars for a bulk bag.
Yes.
And two dollars for either size bag, yes, the overflow. So those two are in here at fifteen and one and. Read, one and two respectively. So now it will become ten. And any size bag is two dollars. Um, other than that, we've got the other fees as as shown, the burial fees, cremations, et cetera. I try to get around that. It's nice. I I won't repeat unless anybody requests that, but maybe. Um, we can send this out with no, no recommendation.
Further discussion on municipal fee schedule? Um. It's um.
Right. Seeing uh, I want to have a roll call. Roll call improving uh over five eighty-one fee schedule with those negatives. Council Khan?
Yes.
Council Lane?
No.
Council McCollum?
Yes.
Council Preston?
Yes.
Council Shane?
Yes.
Council Wright?
Yes.
Council Z?
Yes.
Council Dunn?
Yes.
Council Grant?
Yes.
Council Harmon?
Yes.
Council Cameron?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Go to the order?
Council?
Thank you. I just wanna say that um I feel like we either very close to or over the line on questioning councillors' motives tonight, and I don't appreciate it. I think I was the subject of it. I don't want an apology. I don't want anything. I just want to point it out on the record. Uh, describing motive in the form of, you know, implying or even directly expressing kind of allegations of collusion and crazy things like that. It's not appropriate, and I don't appreciate it. Thank you.
There's a. Possibility of that uh in two corners, and that we all should go and check ourselves on that. Motion adjourned.
Say.
All those in favor?